All right, we're on the air, everybody.
I call the zoning board of adjustment meeting for June 6th, 2023 to order. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website, by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel and Courier News newspapers, and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Board procedures: any hearing conducted by the board is a quasi-judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Meeting cut off. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the zoning board of adjustment not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM, and that at irregular or special meeting unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time. Electronic devices. All in attendance are asked to mute cell phones or any other electronic devices so as not to interrupt the proceedings. Also, as a side note, if you have your iPhones or your phones and you keep them close to your mic, sometimes it picks up static when there's a transmission like a text or something coming through. I've noticed that from being at home. All right, pledge of allegiance? Gary, would you lead us, please?
Do you remember the words?
Yes. You guys will help me along, right?
Yeah.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Devin, would you do the honors?
Absolutely. Mr. Aronio.
Here.
Ms. Brennan.
Here.
Mr. Gianakis.
Here.
Mr. Hain.
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is excused this evening. Mr. Flatley will be joining us later after the polls close. Mr. Opalka.
Here.
Vice Chairman slash Acting Chairman, Mr. Grosskopf.
I am here.
And Chairman Correct will also be joining us later after the polls close. We have a quorum.
Okay. Tonight, we're going through the resolution for Chris and Dawn Brindle, application number 23-04Z. Have we all had a chance to read that?
Yes.
And any questions and/or changes?
I'll make a motion to approve the...
Okay.
Memorialization. I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
And you need me to say anything down that, Deb? Okay, you got it? Cool.
Um, I don't... Was there anybody... Mind if I just see that real quick? I don't remember who was... Left my copy in the other room. So, okay, so everybody with Mr. Opalka, okay. Okay, Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Ms. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Mr. Hain.
Yes.
And Mr. Grosskopf.
Yes.
Great. Motion carries. Uh, did I get everybody? Mr. Hain, right? Yeah. Yes, I got it. Okay. Most carries, thank you.
The first application tonight is for bulk variance. It was carried from May 16th. It's block 12805, lot 11, and it's in the zone of an R2. 90 Dogwood Terrace, application number 23-03Z.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, as the applicants are approaching, I would just point out for the record, the notice for this has been...
Oh, she's good.
I'll let them get set up, and I'll make my spiel. Now it's over. Mine sounds better, right? Thank you. That's right. All right, well, I think all the seating accommodations have been reached. As I was saying, Mr. Chairman, the applicant's notice for this hearing has been... I deem it to be sufficient, bold in content, and timely served. The board may recall, this was carried from the May 16th meeting due to an error in the publication of the notice. The newspaper didn't print the date of the hearing, so the applicant had to republish in the newspaper, and that was timely served 10 days in advance of the hearing. Certified mail notice was sent in the proper format for the May 16th meeting, and we announced at that meeting that we would be carrying it to today. So, long and short of it is, the board has jurisdiction. Please feel free to proceed.
Thank you.
Great. And while I'm on my soapbox here, I might as well get everybody sworn in. Everybody who's going to be testifying, if you could please raise your right hands and... Okay, thank you very much. Now, do all of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God.
I do.
Yes, okay, very, very good. Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman? Board's yours. All righty. Okay, as this is going on, I believe the first thing is to hear the opening statement, I guess, from the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Darren Lombard, and this is my wife's and I agree with her. And just wanted to say a few words as to why we made our application and why we're looking to do the work on our property. So, we purchased our home in Melton in March 2020. We moved our home in Watchum as Sam sustained a spinal cord injury in January 2019 and left the paradise from the waist down and requiring a wheelchair. We loved our home that we lived in Watchum, as it had five bedrooms where distant, we could have relatives and friends could come and stay with us.
Just pull the microphone close.
The house also had a swimming pool. And we loved entertaining friends. Unfortunately, the house in Watchum was on multiple levels, which made it impossible to negotiate in a wheelchair. So, we started to look for a ranch so we could have single-level living. When we found our home in Millington, we loved it immediately. It was all on one level and with some minor adaptations, such as putting a lift in the garage and taking doors up the shower cubicle and adding a shower bench, we were able to make it work in the short term for Sam. We also fell in love with the neighborhood. The people are kind and friendly, and it also has quiet roads that allow Sam to go out safely and get some exercise in her hand cycle. We enjoy interacting with other people in the community, and we often feel like we looked hard when we found the house. We loved the town so much that Sam's parents also moved to Millington soon after we purchased our home. So, while the ranch home that we had worked pretty well for our family, given our specialized needs, there are some improvements that we would like to make to the home so that it functions even better for our family in the long term. The improvements we were requesting were predominantly with its goal in mind. We would like to make the home more accessible for Sam and also provide rehabilitation facilities for her as well. Currently, she cannot navigate in and around the entire house, such as level changes and even yard areas that a wheelchair cannot handle. Therefore, the deck additions wrapping around the back of the home are crucial for this access. In addition, currently Sam cannot access the grill area as it's on a separate level. So, adding outdoor cooking space all on one level would give back Sam back some of her independence. Additionally, hydrotherapy and exercise in general is incredibly important and beneficial to Sam's rehabilitation. And therefore, having a pool like we did in our last time as well as an exercise area will provide this recovery space for her. Currently, Sam's exercise facilities are in the middle of the family room, as it's the only space large enough to fit the platform that she requires. Having this exercise facility up at her bedroom will not only provide exercise space for her, but can double as a changing platform so that she can independently get dressed as well. In addition, completely accessible bathrooms and laundry facilities are also critical, spaces that Sam currently cannot navigate on her own without assistance. We both have local offices, but since COVID and Sam's injury, we mainly work from home, which gives us the need for home office space as well. In addition, given that none of our friends' homes are accessible for Sam, it's important for us to have entertainment space where we can post. And while we added a lift to our garage to make it more accessible for Sam, it basically takes up an entire bay. And Sam's wheelchair accessible car doesn't seem to fit in there anymore. Therefore, we're hoping to extend the garage so that we can still park her cars inside as well as if they're inaccessible. You can imagine in infinite weather negotiating a driveway in a wheelchair with rain and snow is extremely difficult. And lastly, the Bilco doors to the basement will allow us to store items that would otherwise take a room in the garage so that we can keep Sam's equipment like a hand cycle in the garage where she can access it on her own. Admittedly, we knew our additions and renovations would require variance given our corner of configuration. We did look at the option of going up instead of coming out, and thus also adding an elevator versus this one-level proposal we presented to you tonight. There are a number of reasons that adding up was not feasible for our home or our family. As mentioned, the desire for single-level living, as we've already laid out in the rooflines of our current home, made it impossible to add windows and natural light to the second floor. As you can imagine, Sam's desire to not have to rely on an elevator if there was an emergency, was paramount in our decision to look at additional first-floor level living space versus going up. We actually spoke into a number of our neighbors regarding our proposal. We actually attended this neighborhood block party over the Memorial Day weekend where we had the opportunity to talk to almost all of the neighbors that were in close proximity. Nobody's expressed any concerns, and everybody we spoke to wished us luck with this process. If there are no questions with me, I'd like to pass this on to our faculty if we explain the reasons required.
No any questions? I have just one. Mr. Lombard, could I get your address for the record, please?
Yes, it's 90 Dogwood Terrace.
Okay, thank you very much. A lot of procedural stuff we got to do, but I appreciate you coming in, yes? Okay.
So, can I use the handheld microphone?
Yes, that's movable. Yep, no problem.
Do you qualify?
Yes, please, Ms. I was just about to say, if you could give us your name and address or business address for the record, please.
Cindy Bonner, 6 Slaughter Hill Road, Long Valley, New Jersey, 07853.
Long Valley, you said?
Yes.
And could you please provide the board with your qualifications?
So, I'm licensed in the state of New Jersey since 2000. My license is in good standing. I have not presented in this board before, but I've been through various boards and boards, publics, and Essex counties in the past, and qualified as a disturbed witness in the board.
We deem you qualified.
I'm actually going to do a handout. We can mark this as A1 or...
More than likely. Unless... We didn't get this before. 10 days in advance of tonight's meeting?
No.
Okay, yeah, we're going to have to... Name it as an exhibit. Okay, so this is exhibit A1.
Is it Google Maps?
Google Maps. And do you know the approximate date when you screenshotted this?
A couple days before the last month's hearing.
Okay, so let's say May 14th. Sound about right?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. I'm just going to start... Whoa. Okay. I'm just going to start by briefly walking you through the project. These are the current plans that you have in front of you. They haven't been altered in any way. So, this is sheet one, the first floor plan. So, on the first floor, we plan on adding a new master bedroom suite, which consists of a bedroom, an accessible walk-in closet, and an accessible master bathroom, as well as an exercise room, as Darren mentioned, large enough to handle Sam's platform. Keep in mind, accessible spaces do tend to be larger in area purely based to accommodate a five-foot wheelchair turning circle, which is the ADA recommended dimension. The current master bedroom then becomes a bedroom/office. With the new exercise room, the family room now returns to being just a family room rather than a multipurpose room and exercise rehabilitation space. We also propose the rear deck to be expanded to connect the master suite area to the backyard and to the existing rear deck, so the decks will kind of hug the whole back of the house. As Darren mentioned, this allows Sam to get around the exterior of the house, as her wheelchair does not negotiate grass and uneven ground. At the opposite end of the house, we propose adding a small addition to create an accessible mudroom and laundry area, as well as expand the garage, again, as Darren mentioned, to accommodate the wheelchair lift as well as Sam's accessible vehicle, and still have some storage space for Sam's outside exercise equipment, such as her hand cycle. So, we're actually... We're adding about seven feet to the garage, and we're turning it. So, currently, it's a rear entrance garage, which adds a lot of impervious coverage because of the driveway requirements, so we're turning it into a side entrance garage, which will cut down a lot of the garage area. And as you can see, the platform and the lift that are in the garage takes up, as the rear entrance, basically, as Darren said, it takes up an entire bay. In addition, the deck is expanded at this end, as well to allow the connection from the mudroom to the deck, the pool, the driveway, and the backyard, and provide outdoor cooking space at this level that Sam can access independently. Sheet two is your basement plan. So, this area currently is crawl space, so the addition at the basement level underneath the master bedroom addition will also be crawl space. There is a very small addition to the full basement space underneath the mudroom area, which will allow for Bilco access, again, as Darren mentioned, so that they can get some outdoor equipment and storage in the basement so that that stuff isn't stored in the garage. Sheet three is your front and side elevation. So, as you can see, the small garage addition, just expanding the existing roofline, the slight enlargement to the... Oops, sorry. Sorry, adding the dormer at the second floor, it's purely for aesthetic reasons. There's two dormers currently now, so this is just to kind of balance it. And on the right-hand side, you can see the master bedroom addition. And as you can see, we're just expanding the existing rooflines and aesthetics of the existing house. The right side elevation here is the new master suite addition and the exercise room, and then the deck in the background. Sheet four is the rear and side addition. Elevation, remember? So, again, the master suite addition to the left here, we're mimicking the rooflines and the architecture and the window profiles of the existing family room, the deck addition, the pool and the deck, the small mudroom addition, and again, that small garage bump out from the side. So, again, the garage addition with the garage doors facing the side, the mudroom, and the deck and the ramp areas. As you can see... Sorry. Our additions require a number of variances. We require three for our proposal, mainly due to the existing non-conforming scenarios and the hardship of a corner lot with a catty-corner house placement. We require...
Well done.
With one hand a microphone. So, this is actually Brian's site plan. We require a front yard setback to Dogwood Terrace. This is a de minimis variance to allow for a 72.8-foot setback, whereas 77.6 is existing and 75 is required. This 2.2-foot variance, as I mentioned, allows for that seven-foot garage expansion, which provides two benefits. The first is to allow for the side garage entrance, which significantly reduces the area of driveway. We are removing 1,628 square feet of driveway area, which helps offset our other additions from a lot coverage perspective, which we'll talk about more in a moment. The second benefit is it allows both cars to be parked inside the garage and not left out in the driveway, which currently the garage does not fit Sam's accessible vehicle because of the amount of space that the wheelchair lift consumes. The garage expansion also provides the personal benefit of being able to store Sam's outside exercise equipment so she can independently access things like her hand cycle. The second variance is for the front yard setback to Nottingham Way. As mentioned, this is a corner lot, and the home is placed catty-corner, as the other homes in the neighborhood are also situated. If you take a look at the Google map that I handed out, as you can see, the corner homes are all sited with this catty-corner layout. As such, it puts the front extremities of the home too close to the road. The existing front yard setback to Nottingham is an existing non-conforming 46.7 feet, whereas 75 feet is required and 36.5 is proposed. As you can also see on the Google map, the home is very well screened to the road with deciduous and evergreen trees. And as you can also see from Brian's site plan, fencing and additional ever screen... Screening is proposed to further screen the home and additions to the road. You can also see the setback line runs through the middle of the house at this point. So, here's our setback line. So, you can see the existing master suite is already too close to the road and existing non-conforming. There's really no place to add an addition to the bedroom area that would not require variance due to this existing nonconformance. As Darren mentioned, we did look at the alternative of adding up to create bedroom space, but one, that would also require variance since this entire wing is within the setback, and two, we believe the benefits of single living far outweigh any possible negative impact. In fact, with the additional screening proposed and the harmonious architectural stylistically, we believe the addition will be a positive improvement to the home without any negative effect to the property or the neighborhood as a whole. Our last variance is for lot coverage. Our existing lot coverage is existing non-conforming at 9,226 square feet or 20.6%. Our proposed is 10,666 square feet or 23.7%, whereas 9,002 square feet or 20% is allowed. While we are adding significant first-floor improvements of a mudroom addition, a master suite addition, deck additions, and a pool, we have done everything possible to reduce our overall effects, including building the deck with the required gaps and drainage material to reduce their overall impact, and, as mentioned previously, removing a significant portion of paved driveway to offset our addition. Also, as per Brian's site plan, and I'm sure he will further elaborate next, we propose a dry well, which will capture any additional runoff created by our proposal. We therefore believe that the site can handle our proposed improvements and will not create any negative effects on our property or neighboring properties. We have the hardship of an existing nonconformance and the required single-level living due to their family's unique needs. I'd also like to mention, as it wasn't actually called out on the letter of denial, but I believe there may be an additional front yard setback variance required for the AC condensers. So, again, not specifically mentioned. We have a non-conforming side... Sorry, we have a conforming side yard setback of 28.5 feet, whereas 25 is required, but a non-conforming front yard setback of 70 feet, whereas 75 feet is required. Again, they will be very well screened with fencing and vegetation. In conclusion, our additions are in keeping with the style and character of the home, and we're consistent with the neighborhood as a whole. We believe our additions are a positive change to the home, satisfying a C2 variance, where benefits outweigh any potential negatives. We also believe we satisfy a C1 variance of a hardship, being that other corner lots have the same hardship layout issues that our home has, with the two front yard setbacks and the catty-corner configuration, making conforming to both front yard setbacks extremely difficult, if not impossible, due to the existing nonconformance. We also have the hardship of an existing non-conforming lot coverage, which we are increasing. However, we believe we are significantly reducing our impact with the garage and the deck design details. We believe the additions are also well-screened to neighboring properties and the road with proposed fencing and vegetation, and for all of these reasons, we hope the board looks favorably upon our application. So, if there's no questions for me, I'd like to hand it off to Brian, who'll talk a little bit more specifically about the pool and the landscape improvements to the home.
Let's ask if there are any questions. First, can we go to our professionals?
So, just because I missed it writing it down, the additional variance for the generator, you said front yard?
The AC condensers.
Oh, sorry, the AC condenser.
So, it's a front yard setback of 70 feet, whereas 75 feet is required. So, you can see here, they just kind of sneak in front of that setback line.
Okay. Oh, good. Ms. Bonner, like, quick. Probably don't need to ask, but just have to be careful. The plan we're looking at right now, this is what was submitted with the application package?
That's Brian's site plan, correct?
Same plan. Just making sure that we don't have to mark it as an exhibit. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, just a couple of...
Sorry. I'm not done.
Just a couple of items from my letter. One is just making sure that there is a self-closing, self-lashing fence around the pool of four feet. Oh, I'm sorry. And can you confirm that the generator is at least 10 feet from the home?
Eight feet.
Okay, so that's just another variance.
Right.
Yeah. And then, I assume, I think you said this, but the colors and the materials of the addition are going to be matching.
I mean, do you guys plan on painting any different colors or just... Yeah, I mean, it's just going to match the existing, yeah.
That's it. Thank you.
You're good?
Any questions from the board?
Great.
No.
Very simple?
The job, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
And for the record, there are no members of the public here as well.
Right, right. No members of the public. Right, going once.
Please don't all rush.
Going twice. Going three times. You're out. Okay. Mr. Stratton, if you could please give us your credentials?
Good evening. Yes, licensed landscape architect. Do I need to use this? We kind of need it.
For the broad audio, I have to pick it up.
Okay. Licensed landscape architect in New Jersey, licensed in 2010, licensure in good standing, testified before probably a dozen boards, mainly in North Jersey, down to Central Jersey.
You are Brian Stratton, correct?
I am.
Did you get his address? Business address for the record, please.
69 Mount Lebanon Road, Port Murray, New Jersey.
Thank you very much. We deem you qualified.
Great, thank you. So, I guess my part will be to mainly go through the review letters of the planner and the engineer to address their concerns and where they specifically noted that there should be testimony kind of relating to those certain questions. So, to the question that you asked, yes, there will be a pool code, four-foot minimum with a self-closing latch. That will be, you know, typically when a pool builder's hired or the fence contractor's hired, they're required to submit a detail that'll outline type of fence and all those sort of specs to the building department. We talked about the generator. So, yeah, as proposed, it's eight feet away. We could very easily scoot that 10. I didn't know that 10 was a minimum in the town. I guess that's a township-specific code?
It is. So, it's really up to you. I mean...
Liz, I'm sorry.
However, if you move it to 10, then you're going to require a front yard setback variance.
Wait, wait. Liz, 10 feet from the house or 10 feet from the...
10 feet from the principal building. Yeah.
Oh, 10 feet from... Okay.
Depends on which way we scoot it. If we just scoot it back, it's easy. So, I mean, I see having to make a couple changes anyway, because I need to increase the amount of dry wells, so that would be like a contingency. We can just scoot that back to avoid that.
So, you just move it to the rear of the home, essentially? So, maintain the same side yard setback?
Yeah, the generator's right here, so I could literally just slide it there two feet.
Okay.
No big deal. I have a bunch of evergreens kind of screening it, so they don't see it, so...
Mr. Stratton, just to be clear, you guys are not going to be requesting the variance for the generator, then? You're going to move it back?
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Thank you.
I think that would be the path of least resistance.
A condition of the approval.
Yeah, condition, yeah.
If it were to...
Right.
Yes, correct. And we talked about the colors. Are there any other concerns that you may have, or should I just kind of finish and go to the engineer's plans?
Go to the engineer's plans.
Okay. So, technical review comments, 3.1. Yes, so we have 26 8-to-10-foot evergreen trees specified. We've got seven along here, 11 along here, and then another, I think it's seven or eight along here. So, basically, you know, the ones in the front are clearly to provide additional screening and kind of beef up the existing screening of a mixture of deciduous and evergreen trees that Cindy had discussed. So, we really wanted to, you know, kind of wrap around like a nice staggered loose evergreen screen. And, you know, a lot of times, people plant these little baby evergreens that take 10 years to grow. So, 8-to-10s are pretty darn sizable, and upon planting, they're going to almost be touching, and I think that'll do a nice kind of buffer, right? Because that is just projecting out... It's not much, but it's something. So, if any neighbors are concerned, or you all were concerned at all, I think we're going to really soften that nicely.
Screening... Reason for the comment, you know, just to understand the screening buffer towards the front yard setback variance being requested on that side, the appropriateness of that, as well as the infill that you see in the rear yard, and then the gap in the back corner being existing tree cover in that rear area. So, that area was, you know, not required for planting.
Yeah. So, you know, these here, just based on the location of their neighbors, this is actually really beautiful back here. It kind of looks like an extension of their property. It's kind of like where a couple of properties merge. And, yeah, there's no structure, you know, there's nothing that they needed to screen or they're, you know, they don't feel like they're exposed by people seeing them when they're up on a deck, you know, around the pool. But we did want to beef up, you know, on the left side of the property and the right side of the property, and really kind of like just tuck it in, make it cozy. It's always better for everyone involved. Additionally, I do have, you know, another... They're not huge, but they're probably five-foot tall kind of evergreens kind of running along the proposed fence here, because there are just kind of like a couple gaps, so we want to kind of close that up. Those are kind of smaller. You know, we're using, you know, similar species to, you know, surround the pool equipment to block that. That's unsightly for the homeowner, and also to conceal the new AC units and the generator. But as far as the public... lifting to kind of soften what we're doing. Because this addition over here off the garage is, is super minimal and that didn't really require any special treatment.
Can you, can you show me where the driveway is now and will be?
So driveway comes up, the existing driveway actually went like so, went back, maybe another 15, 20 feet. And it kind of now blends into their existing deck. And so that's being cut out and removed. So this, so this kind of chunk right here is being removed. And then the new driveway is coming up like this. There's a little turnaround so they can back the car in and head out, nose first.
Any other questions?
I have a question. It's about the fence. I'm sorry I missed your response to a question about those, the fence at the beginning, the pool fence.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Can you just describe the pool fence for me? Because I missed, I think I missed something, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, sure. So, so national code is you need a minimum four foot high pool fence. And actually, not all four foot high pool fences comply because it depends on the style. Sometimes the bottom rail puts you to a four and a half footer. So, but the minimum national code is four foot high. You have to have a 360-degree enclosure. So ours is kind of tricky how we're making it kind of come in and then wrap around the property line and cut back in. Gets a little, little fancy in here where we've got the ram for accessibility and the, you know, the back door and the driveway.
The house is part of the fence itself?
Yes. Yep, the house structure, you know, counts. And then national code, the fence has to swing out. I honestly don't know why that's code, but it's out and then it has to self-close. So the building inspector, when they come out, they look at the height, they look at the, you don't have big gaps under the bottom and that latch in fact swings back so that, you know, somebody swings it open, it doesn't remain open and a kid could come in, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So 3.2, 3.3, I don't think need any sort of response. So I'd like to jump to 3.4 to 3.6. And I had one dry well proposed, totally get the engineer's comments, get that the town requires a four inch, you know, to handle the runoff or a four inch storm versus maybe a three inch that other towns use. So I've already done the dry well calc's that I can provide to you, you know, on a plan after. And basically what I calculated was instead of one 500 gallon, you know, seepage pit or dry well, we would need 3,000 gallon tanks. And we got plenty of room right here. This is just lawn. So I would, I've already actually done these calc's. I would just need to, you know, add them to the plan. And, you know, we are collecting the water from the roof leaders for the proposed additions as well.
Yeah, one recommendation I have for you is that as you get to that larger quantity size, the precast dry wells cost competitive against say prefab units by ADS or the segmented systems you could put in a lower-
Plastic, yeah.
Yeah, plastic ADS systems.
The chambers.
Yeah, so you may have other options that would offset that cost of increasing these precast units that you can look at. And they're, they're gonna be equally as effective. I also feel like for the board, the, the increase of, of the design for the stormwater management to the rear to meet our code, the square footage of impervious coverage is relatively significant, but the site is well-suited in the rear for this to increase the amount of dry wells because there's not a lot of cut and fill grading that's happening. They're maintaining a lot of the existing grades and patterns in that rear yard, so there's a lot of open lawn area. If you found that to be suitable without it having a high groundwater table previously, when they do the testing, that'll also be confirmed and, you know, adding two more dry wells wouldn't be an issue in that area.
Great. Yeah, yeah, and I agree with you on the chamber systems. I found it kind of depends on the contractors, what they're comfortable using. Some guys are just-
What they can source for the right price.
Yeah, some guys want the truck to come up and just drop a tank, some guys don't like playing. But yeah, I agree with you there, especially if you have a higher water table, which we'll have to find out once we have the engineer do a per test. So moving on to 3.7, yeah, I have a civil engineer who does this for some of my clients and they'll go out, they'll get an excavator, you know, prior to construction to kind of dig a test hole here and they'll do a percolation test. They'll be able to see the soil profile, determine where the high water table is. And at that point, you know, let's say I do design it for precast, if we need to call it an audible and switch to those lower chambers, I guess I could deal with you at that time too.
Absolutely, yeah, we could work right there.
Make sure we got enough storage volume, so. 3.8, stormwater management narrative should be provided. So Darren had taken a video of where the current roof leaders are all going to. And the answer is, we don't know. They're going underground, which is good. So hopefully they're going somewhere, not just spitting out onto the lawn, right? So literally every single one of the plus or minus eight roof leaders are, are going into ground. So, you know, our suspicion obviously is that they're sending them into maybe a dry well in the front yard or somewhere in property. Without doing some sort of fancy location. We don't know, but-
So what we would, we'll work together on is just confirming in writing that we're maintaining those existing roof leaders to those locations so that the modifications and all the additions and the impervious in the rear yard is all being dedicated to the new locations that they're adding.
Sure, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So basically say we're leaving the existing alone and we're, everything being added is going in this direction.
Mm-hmm, yeah, not a problem. Okay. Let's see here. So 3 dot 11. So when I do my amended plan with the dry wells, I can then accurately depict the limited disturbance, which is, you know, total amount of space that we're realistically gonna be disturbing when doing this, this entire project. I did do the calculation, we will be over 5,000, so we'll have to go to soil conservation. Not a problem, used to doing that all the time. It's basically this plan and they want to see seeding and stabilization and still fence so that the site is protected throughout construction and you're not getting any sort of runoff or anything like that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, and that-
Yeah, you're good.
Pretty much addresses all-
That's everything in my letter.
Yep.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Liz, do you have anything for?
No.
You're good? Okay, so both our engineers are good. So, the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Any members of the board have any questions?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
I didn't get to write it down. The existing impervious coverage, and I know you went over this before, but I just wrote it down. Existing impervious coverage and what's the proposed?
So the existing-
Existing lot coverage is not holding at 9,226 square feet or 20.6 percent. Proposed is 10,666 square feet or 23.7 percent, whereas 9,002 square feet or 20 percent is allowed.
So the existing's over by nominally 200?
Right, existing is already over, I understand.
Okay. Any other questions at this point? Before I do my thing? Okay.
Do your thing.
Okay, let me hop in here. So Mr. Stratton, to the applicants, I guess to the entire team, you guys have any issues complying with all the comments and recommendations raised in, it seems you're gonna grade pretty much everything in these two memorandum?
Right, yeah.
Okay, fantastic. And then I did hear a couple additional agreements that I think we might want to include as conditions. And I might need Joe to confirm these for me because I'm not an engineer and God knows, I don't think I ever could be. Number one, we're gonna be, one of the conditions is gonna be that we're gonna be moving the generator to a compliant location. You're gonna be providing dry well counts, that would be the second one, is that, did I hear that right, Joe?
And that's part of my letter.
That's part of the letter, okay, fantastic. Yeah, I might be retreading some ground here.
Just the first so far.
Naive take, okay. I guess as a, probably just be satisfied by complying with all the terms, but working with the engineer to confirm, or we're going with Joe to confirm that the stormwater management system will be sufficient. And then, this might have actually been a comment in the letter, but providing something in writing that says you're gonna be maintaining the roof leaders, is that in your letter?
Yeah, it's all in the letter.
Okay, fantastic. All right, well-
The only one, the only one being the identification of the AC condenser unit variance by the architect and then the generator sliding back out for compliance.
Right. I did bring that one up. Okay, okay. So that is, that's it for conditions. Then I guess, public?
Welcome to the public. Blues to the public.
Can I get another clarification on the gutter leaders? Is that okay? So, you said you don't know where all of them are going now. In the, in the new project, are you gonna know where some of them go and you're only bringing some of them into the detention basins or are all of them going into there?
So we are going for sure this little addition here off the garage, that, that's an easy one. Let's go right to the dry well there.
Okay.
Off the back of this addition here, that's an easy one. This little guy here, I didn't know, I mean, it's so inconsequential and I didn't know what the exact-
Probably a value of a roof that goes into that one?
Yeah, I'm not sure, is that a shed roof that you're doing there? Yeah, we've got the mudroom.
Mudroom.
Okay, yeah, so it's a little shed roof, you can just have a gutter here.
And that one's gonna go out to the new system?
Yeah. These two are probably like 30 feet of one another. So we'll just tie this into this guy.
And bring it on back, yeah. Are you gonna be able to catch any of the ones up front that we don't know where they go now? And if you discover they're coming out to the road, wouldn't it be better to be kind of contained on the property site?
I think that's a question of the engineer.
So we can, we can check to see if there's penetrations in the curb and/or any inlets on the road to confirm that they're not coming to the road?
Are they supposed to be? I know that's the way that things used to be, but I don't know if that's, I think I just saw something about that they shouldn't, they shouldn't be that way anymore, right?
Like they should not be that way?
Yeah.
If they were there, you'd have to look back to see when they were there and if they were grandfathered. My, my assumption is that they come to dry wells in the front yard from the, from the original permits to-
I think I heard somebody mention that, but is the gutter on-
So, we'll do some investigation. I'll, I'll help them confirm where that is.
The gutter on the right-hand side addition. Yeah, is it, is half of that roof going to the front and half of that roof going to the back or can the gutter be tilted in such a way that all the water is going to the back?
Yeah, that would be a silly question. We probably realistically probably would have a-
So this roof goes this way and that roof goes that way. Is that percentage you want to put in?
Not this, it's this way.
The whole-
So the gutter, the gutter runs like this?
So there's a, well, there's gutter in the front here because it's two gables perpendicular to the gutter. So there'd be a gutter that's in the front here and then a gutter comes along the downside of the back.
Oh, so you're really only catching, you're only really catching half of that addition in the back?
Right, yeah. Because you'd be catching this, this, and that, you would not be catching this.
Well, we could, we could put another here that just ties it.
That just tied in, but that would be going down south from the front to the back.
Right.
Yeah.
It's only 30 feet or whatever. So basically we would have an additional one here. I can note that on the engineering plan.
Sure.
Because that's, that's close to the road. That one currently is kind of close to the road or will be even closer, right?
Yeah, the existing one is coming off of this corner right here.
Yeah, but now there's a corner closer.
I think it would be wise like not to tie into that because we don't know where that goes.
Right.
I think it would just be wise, catch another one here, tie it in.
Sure.
And just set everything, you know, everything that we're adding, we just want to set it.
Right, or alternatively that, that addition may just be able to stand alone on a small dry well to the side of the home.
It could.
You know, depending on how your, your full sizing all works out and what areas have to go to it from what parts of the backyard.
I've done it different ways, I mean, we could, one, two, three dry wells.
Yeah, or if we can get them all to one place, that's great.
Yeah. It's a complete, um, big contrast.
So.
Contractors.
One excavation, less man-hours, less, less rental on the equipment.
Okay, working with Joe.
Yeah, I mean, I'm comfortable working through, you know, the requirements, the narrative to satisfy the letter, which would indicate either even just by sketching and confirmation of where the roof leaders are and where they go to, as our understanding.
And the township engineer will also, they'll have to apply for a lot grading permit with the township engineer.
Correct.
And he will also review that as well.
Great, thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I think we need to do public comment.
Public comment? Okay, that's, that's done. Ready for deliberations? Jerry, would you like to start us off?
Sure, I'll start it off. I think it's a great application.
I was just gonna ask if you wanted to sum up first or after deliberations? I thought we would do the summing up after, but if you want to sum up now, it's fine by me.
Then we sum up a, if it's a potential-
Oh, okay, by all means. Yeah, every board does it differently. My apologies, go ahead.
Well, I just was about to say, I think it's a very thoughtful application, very considerate of your neighbors with the screening. It's probably for yourself too, but it's, it's a beautiful, I think, landscape concept. I think you've addressed all of the things that we are normally concerned with, especially the stormwater management. It's a real big issue in our town and I think you've done a good job. We got questions from board member, a board member, and you addressed that. So I think it's a great application and I'm definitely in favor of it.
Scott, would you like to go next?
I have to agree with my colleague Jerry that I think it's addressed very well. All the situations you have addressed and I agree wholeheartedly and I'm in favor of this application.
I, I missed one. And it does, it does, it is from a legal standpoint, also I think you've, you've addressed the hardship that you have and I think that it qualifies. Sorry about that.
Gary?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen the house before, driven past it, and it's got some interesting roof lines that you're gonna have fun with and, and the contractors will, you know, enjoy kind of tying everything together. Yeah, the property is oddly situated in the catty corner and you've got the property hardship and you've got your, you know, your personal hardship and I think you're making great use of the space and, and improving it. Although you're now expanding its impact, I think you're making some great improvements. Thank you. So I'm in favor of it.
Jessica?
I agree, I'm in favor of the application. I think that you've met both the C1 and C2 criteria in terms of the hardship that's been described with how the property is situated in the current, you know, footprint of the home. In terms of the C2 criteria, I agree that the benefit that you're adding here in terms of improving the property, the aesthetic of the neighborhood, planting the new trees, I think that the pool will add to, you know, the value of the home and the neighborhood. And frankly, the neighborhood might benefit from this water management and, and dry well that you're putting in as well. So I don't see any detriment and I'm in favor of the application.
Tony, would you?
and I think you're making great use of the space and, and improving it. Although you're now expanding its impact, I think you're making some great improvements. Thank you. So I'm in favor of.
Jessica?
Um, I agree, I'm in favor of the application. I think that you've met both the C1 and C2 criteria in terms of the hardship that's been described with how the property is situated in the current, you know, footprint of the home. In terms of the C2 criteria, I agree that the benefit that you're adding here in terms of improving the property, the aesthetic of the neighborhood, planting the new trees, I think that the pool will add to, you know, the value of the home and the neighborhood. And frankly, the neighborhood might benefit from this water management and, and dry well that you're putting in as well. So I don't see any detriment and I'm in favor of the application.
Tony, would you?
Yeah, I'll keep it brief.
Michael. Michael.
I'll keep it brief, I'm in support, I don't see any reason not to, and I think everything is well done.
Okay. I too am in, in agreement with my colleagues. It's a beautiful home, by the way, many of us have been there, well, not there, but to see it. Uh, it is, it's, it's very pretty, it's, you do have an encumbering situation in that it is oddly shaped, oddly placed on the lot. Although, pretty from the street, tough for you with the two front yards and the setbacks. Uh, I think you've done a great job with working with the existing plan and then moving the driveway so that you could alleviate some of the impervious coverage. You'll be at twenty-three point seven in an R2, that's too much. But there are other areas in town within R4, you would be able to have twenty-five percent. Do I think twenty-three point seven percent is egregious? No, I do not. So to that point, I, I think that your, the positives outweigh the negatives, and I wish you many years of good luck in this after we vote. Okay, you're ready to go to a vote?
Oh.
This is my turn.
This is my turn.
It's what paid me for it, come on.
Okay, so let's just sum up what we got here. Four variances. Front yard setback from Dogwood Terrace, required seventy-five feet, proposed seventy-two feet, ten inches. And if I'm getting anything wrong, please feel free to jump in and correct me. Second variance that issue here is a front yard setback from Nottingham Way. Again, seventy-five feet required, thirty-six feet, six inches proposed. Next is impervious coverage, twenty percent required, or twenty percent maximum permitted, twenty-three point seven percent proposed. And then the AC condenser unit, front yard setback, again, seventy-five feet. And I'm sorry, what street was that from? It was from Nottingham or was that from Dogwood?
Dogwood?
Dogwood, okay.
Okay. Far, far right side of it? Or Nottingham? Oh, it is? Okay.
The AC condensers here, this is the front yard setback from Nottingham.
So that's from Nottingham, okay.
Yeah.
Great, just wanted to confirm, thank you very much.
And that was seventy.
Yeah, seventy proposed versus seventy-five required. And that's it for variances, as far as condition goes, applicants are gonna, are going to comply with the comments and recommendations raised in Board Engineer Voight's May tenth, twenty twenty-three memorandum, as well as Board Planner Lahini's May ninth, twenty twenty-three memorandum, additional conditions including, slide to it, identification of the AC unit variance on the plans, revising the plans to show the generator location after it's moved. I guess this kind of coincides with that, but moving the generator to a compliant location. And then, in addition to complying with the engineer's memorandum, working with Mr. Voight to ensure that the proposed stormwater, stormwater management system will be compliant and sufficient for the property. And I believe that's it, if I'm leaving anything out, please feel free to jump in. Nope? Okay, wow, all right.
Mr. Chairman, back to you. Okay. Scott, how would you like to vote?
In favor, yes.
Well, we need a motion in a second.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve this application.
Thank you.
I second it.
Okay, Mr. Aronio?
Yes.
Mr. Giannakis?
Yes.
Ms. Brennan?
Yes.
Mr. Hayne?
Yes.
Mr. Apalka?
Yes.
And Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good luck.
Many years of happiness.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
I wish every board was like you guys, you're very reasonable.
We wish every applicant was like you guys.
Yeah.
Make it harder next time.
All right, Acting Chairman Grosskopf, I would suggest that we take a, a brief recess to wait for a seventh member to appear for the next application.
Absolutely. So we'll take a ten to fifteen minute recess?
Yep, I just reached out to Ed to see what his timing is, so.
Yeah, great work. Okay, so we'll come back.
All right, I'm calling the Long Hill Township Board of Adjustment Meeting back to order at 8:25, 8:26?
Eight thirty-five.
Thirty-six, thirty-six, I'm sorry, thirty-six.
Stop drinking.
I know. I should start. Could we have a roll call because we have extra myself and Mr. Flatley showed up after our voting obligations?
Yes. Mr. Aroneo?
Here.
Ms. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Gianakis?
Here.
Mr. Hayne?
Here.
Mr. Rosenberg is excused this evening. Mr. Flatley?
Here.
Mr. Apalca?
Here.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf?
Here.
Chairman Correct?
Here.
We have a court.
Right, thank you. Now, the next use, I assume we've gone through everything else? The next use variance that I've led to believe we're doing is a use variance, major preliminary and final site plan with variances. Block 10801, block 1.02, Zone B-1-20, commonly known as 541 Mountain Avenue, application number 23-01Z. Alexander and Allison Baileyan care of Frederick Zelli Esquire. Applicant proposes as an addition to the existing commercial building and a use variance for operation therein of a specialized tool repair, refurbishment, and sale business. The applicant is present? All right, speaking to that... It is, good, because I noticed I was listening to one of our meetings and the attorney sitting there was very hard to hear.
That was a question. He said, "Do we have a..."
Oh, I don't know. I don't think that's working.
Oh, that's not working?
No.
No, the ones behind you, it wasn't fine. Let me just see if I had one of those down.
Is it on, or did you turn that little switch?
It sounded fine with the last...
Yeah.
Last one.
It's underneath.
Sometimes there's a switch underneath.
No, it's on top. It should have a red light. All right, we'll use the ones in the back.
Here, let me, I'll just keep you in the court, because that's a pull-up.
Does this one work? You want to plug that in?
No, that was specifically for the court.
I make a motion that we get the sound system in order.
The process, we're getting it.
There we go.
All right, the only problem with that is we're gonna need that mic for your architect, for your engineer, too. Your chair, okay, well, then that's gonna be hard. We don't have another mic we can plug in there? Okay, all right, sorry. All right, go ahead.
Well, if you want to sit in that chair, that one that's fixed there works. I don't know if you want to do that, but... Well, when Bill testifies, I can do that.
Okay.
Maybe it'll work. Just remind me to do that.
Before Mr. Zelli gets started, let me just point out for the record, applicant's notice is sufficient, both in content and in timeliness. Certified mailed on May 26, 2023, and published in newspaper on May 25, 2023, both well, in advance of 10 days of this meeting. The board has jurisdiction, in my opinion, so.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, Mr. Zelli, well, let's swear in his witness.
Might as well.
We have two witnesses this evening, Alexander Baileyan and Bill Hallows, our engineer.
Let's swear there, man.
Okay. Do all of you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So hope you got? Okay, fantastic.
All right, proceed.
Good smoky evening, everyone. For the record, Frederick Zelli Millington on behalf of the applicants. Chairman has given the perfect overview of everything, so I'll skip to the second page of my preparation. This is, in fact, a D1 use variance as well as one bulk variance application. The unique thing about this D1, though, is we are actually significantly lowering the intensification of the non-conforming use that's proposed in this case. What we have replaced, as you may recall, was Rich's Automotive Repair, which was a full-service, retail-level automotive repair facility with customers coming in and out all day long, and you'll hear from Mr. Baileyan that his business is significantly different from that. Very little traffic on the site at all. So even though we are also non-conforming, as was Rich's, he was there pursuant to a variance issued back around 1980, the actual use is going to be, as I said, less intense, and for that reason, we think you'll find it to be a favorable use of the property. The bulk variance involved, again, we're improving the situation. It's currently 5.5 percent, I'm sorry, 55.4% impervious coverage. That's significantly more than the 40, which is allowed, but we're reducing it significantly down from 55.4 to 47.3. So again, we think overall, as far as the community is concerned, we're improving the use of the property and we're improving your bulk situation. The reason it's a D1 at all is because of very specific wording in your ordinance dealing with the two definitions of retail service uses and retail trades. Both of those are permitted in the zone. Retail service use covers our repair business, which Mr. Baileyan will testify is about 60% of his business. Retail trades does not cover the sales component of his business. He repairs equipment for customers. He also refurbishes and then resells the same type of equipment. So that sales component is not permitted under your definition of retail trades because it has to be sales for personal or household consumption. And these are specialized pieces of equipment that are used by plumbers and other trades, not by typical members of the public for their homes. So for that reason and only that narrow reason, we need the D1. So if there's no further questions for me or any questions for me, we're gonna start with Mr. Baileyan and then go on to Mr. Hallows.
Thank you. Mr. Baileyan, would you describe your business for us a little more than what your attorney just said exactly? But speaking to the mic, make sure that mic's in front of you.
All right. We are a...
Mr. Bailey, I just want to hop in, name an address for the record, please.
Yes, name an address.
Home address, or?
Yeah, home address, yeah.
Alexander Baileyan, 185 Mendham Road, Burnsville, New Jersey, 07924.
Okay, continue.
We're a very specialized business. We really cater to the commercial electrician, commercial plumber, fire sprinkler contractor, things like that. We don't really offer a service that many do. These trades have expensive equipment that goes involved, that's involved in their trade. It's not, you know, a cordless drill, I mean, in addition to being like a cordless drill and things like that. They're expensive pieces of equipment that they typically want to repair and/or buy used.
What does the equipment do?
We specialize in pipe benders, pipe threaders, things like that.
Now, how many employees would you be having?
One.
Just yourself?
Well, oh, two.
Two, okay.
Two, current. Current.
Mr. Chairman, I can, I'll bring that all out and divorce unless you wanted to.
I understand, but I, I mean, I want him to explain a little bit about his business.
No problem.
And is there any, how many people would go in and out of your business in a day for as far as customers?
In a day, I would say close to zero. You know?
Do they ship their tools to you, or how is that?
We can ship. Typically, for my local customers, we pick up and deliver. Very seldom does somebody come in and drop off a tool or any equipment, stuff like that. Typically, I've been in business for 15 years, longstanding relationships. A lot of my customers just really call. They let me know what they need, and we get it to the job site.
So in other words, you'd be reducing the volume of traffic going in and out of that business as compared to an automotive?
Absolutely, absolutely.
All right, questions for?
Are you a franchise, or?
Just privately, I don't.
Any other questions? No? Okay. Well...
You're doing Fred's job for him.
I'm just questioning him, so, you know, go ahead.
No, you're going.
You can do as much of my job as you like, it's not...
That's fine, go ahead.
I'll shoot him on his answers. Check off some things that we've... Just for the record, Tool Doctor is a sole proprietorship, not an LLC?
Sole proprietor.
And you said you've been doing this for 15 years. Where did you do it prior to moving to this property?
I was renting a space in Berkeley Heights for either seven or eight years. I can't, I can't remember.
And you purchased this location?
This one I purchased, yes.
When did you purchase this property?
We closed, I believe it's Labor Day last year, either August 1st or September 1st. I was trying to find some paperwork before coming here, but I believe it was Labor Day last year.
And I'll speak for you a little bit, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. When you purchased the property, you were not aware that this was a non-permitted use in the zones, I think you said?
Yes.
But you did know for this addition, because, not even for the addition, but the fact that you have a coverage issue, you needed a variance, and then we talked about you might also need to use variance.
Right.
Just so the board understands that you didn't just ignore them and buy a property that you weren't allowed to use. Let's do this. Let's go through the photographs. For the record, these are the photographs that were submitted with the original application. They were taken by myself shortly before the filing. And what I'm gonna ask you to do, Alex, is just...
Do weddings, too, or?
I'm good at this.
It's a fun job.
If I take them, they show what I want them to show. That's the important thing. So we're gonna go one photograph at a time and just tell the board what it's depicting, and also confirm that the photograph depicts the way it appears to this date.
Okay.
And start with the first one. I do have a follow-up question before you switch to the next one.
That's the front of the building?
So Mountain Avenue side?
Mountain Avenue side, I'm sorry.
And this is the sole entrance to the property, is it right?
Yeah, the sole driveway to the property.
And while we have this photograph, I'm gonna ask you about the sign. Obviously, it says Tool Doctor, so it's your sign. Was, did you utilize an existing physical sign from the prior use?
No.
Or did you build this yourself?
We, I bought that myself, but I kept within the size that was already there. We didn't make it any larger than the sign that Rich had.
And is it the same location as Rich had?
Same spot.
Okay. And there is one architectural question that I'm gonna ask since we're on this photo. Looking at the window, the single window that faces Mountain Avenue, the architectural plan, and you have that in front of you as well, the first page of the architectural plan, just shows a simple square, whereas the photograph is showing a rectangle with kind of three windows. Are you changing this window at all, or are the architects just not?
I would like to leave the window as it is.
So the, the plan that we're looking at says a commercial addition, front elevation is wrong with the window?
Just as the window. And you're literally gonna keep the existing window as it is?
I would like to, yes.
Next photograph?
Next photograph, this is as you pull into the driveway. You can see some parking spots on your right. A fence that goes all along, really, the property, and a swinging gate if you wanted to access the back of the building. And you can kind of see like a little, like a table and chairs. There's a walkway there to enter through like our, to like the reception area or the building.
Is that also your office area, reception area?
Correct.
Do you plan on keeping the table and chairs there?
I would like to, yes.
There are, I believe, five parking spaces before the fence.
I think there's six right now.
You're proposing?
Five, and one of which would include a handicap spot.
And so a third photograph is showing exactly that?
Yep, the six spots, yep.
Fourth photograph.
So this is as you come into that swinging gate. This is looking at the right side of the building. There's a carport, two sheds, just some stuff we've left outside for storage. And then the truck to the middle left of that picture is a company vehicle.
So let's focus on this picture a little bit. Let me ask you a few questions. So for starters, we're seeing rolling toolboxes. Is that essentially what they are?
Yes.
Okay. Will they continue to be there? Is that something that you keep outside?
Typically, no. We just don't have enough space inside, right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
So with the new addition, those would be inside? Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. The carport, is that still there?
It's still there right now, but we don't plan to keep that.
Okay. How about the two sheds that are after it?
That would be the same. It's there now, but we don't plan to keep those either.
What's in the tool shed, in the carport now?
It's empty. Maybe some rogue persons. It's serving no purpose.
What's in the sheds?
There's a couple, like smaller, like pipe threading dies and stuff like that.
And they're all gonna be moved inside?
All that stuff will be inside, yes.
Is the area where those sheds and the truck and the carport or tent paved, or is it gravel?
Right where you get to the carport is where the gravel starts. Everything from the carport towards Mountain Avenue is paved.
Do you plan on keeping it gravel, or is it gonna be paved?
We're gonna pave.
After the stuff is removed, you plan on paving?
Yes, yeah.
Is that just to park the truck, because there's no longer gonna be a tent or a shed or another shed? There's, there's, there's nothing back there, right now, on the gravel area?
Yes.
The only thing that's gonna stay there, or still be there, and now it's gonna be all paved, is just this one truck.
Yes, and that, and I probably, if we go to the next picture I have...
Let's go ahead.
So a couple pictures down, there's a dumpster that we have in that back corner. If you go one, two, three, four, like five pictures back, you see like all the gravel area?
Yeah.
And there's a dumpster that we have back there. Other than that, there's nothing else back there.
Do you think there's any opportunity to not have it paved, or even gravelled, or something that would be letting a little more water into the ground?
I haven't really thought about that.
Mr. Hallows will address that. We are significantly reducing the size of the gravel area.
Oh.
That's primarily where the reduction in coverage is coming from.
Okay, thanks.
Fifth photograph is just more shots of those toolboxes. Try to go through these a little quickly. The truck is, says Tool Doctor on it, so I'm assuming that's your company's truck?
Correct.
Do you have any other vehicles, or anticipate acquiring any other vehicles for those types of services?
Right now, I just have one work van that I use as a daily driver, so the box truck that's there now is like, that's where it's parked. Otherwise, I take my van back and forth from my home every day.
And this is used for bigger equipment pickup and delivery?
Exactly.
Do customers ever send trucks to your location?
It happens, yeah, every now and then, but like I said, if they were sending a truck to my location, that would be the frequency where a customer comes to pick something up.
And then they would leave?
Right, that's exactly. So it doesn't happen often.
And are those similar box trucks, or straight jobs, or tractor trailers?
Usually like work vans, things like that.
So we don't have a need for a tractor trailer to be able to maneuver on this site, is that correct?
A tractor trailer, no, but we do ship from time to time, and in that case, they bring like straight jobs, like 26-foot trucks, stuff like that, 16-foot box trucks, stuff like that.
And Mr. Hallows will address the maneuverability of those types of vehicles on site. Back, just another shot of the truck. So just everybody's on the same, literally on the same page. We'll look at this shot now. And what does that picture show us?
It shows the back of the building. There's another garage door there, another pedestrian door there to get into the building, and then really just like a big gravel lot. You see the dumpster that we use, and then just some stuff that we've left outside.
And is that door going, that overhead door going to stay there?
Well, no, I'd like to...
It's gonna be interior because of the addition.
It would be, so I'd like to knock that wall down and have it, you know, all open.
Feel like I might have set the page up. Next photo?
Now you're looking at the back and the right side of the building. There's four garage doors, the same pedestrian door. Some stuff outside.
So looking at the right side, as you, as you described it, which also be the southern, southern side of the building, we have two brown overheads and a larger white overhead.
Yes. So...
Which are staying and which are going?
We are gonna, the plan is to block up the two brown garage doors and just keep the larger white door for access. Just to give it like a smooth, clean finish look.
And again, just for perspective, this entire eastern end of the building will be blocked by the new addition.
Right.
And you said that wall will then come out?
Yes.
Next photograph is just a straight-on shot of the southern side?
Yeah.
And then we have one interior shot of the, is that the office reception area?
Office reception area.
And is that manned by you typically, or nobody, or who's usually running that office?
Me typically, yes.
And then we have a couple shots of the interior. Now, this is the existing
Yes.
work area?
Yes.
When we get to the architectural plans, the, this area shown in this photograph and the new addition are both labeled as warehouse. I'm assuming that's not completely accurate, because you are a repair facility as well.
Yeah, so when I say warehouse, it's just our working area, so.
Storage and working.
Storage and working, yes. So we can do with like, I mean, like you see some of the green metal toolboxes and stuff like that. I just do repairs on top of those right now. We just don't have enough space for work tables and benches and stuff like that.
And with the new addition, you anticipate being able to have those types of things?
A lot of this stuff that you see in this photo would be moved over, and then this would be turned into, you know, where we can get our hands dirty.
And the last photograph, just another shot, same area but different shot?
Exactly.
Let's take a look at Mr. Coleman's architectural plans. Of course, not asking Mr. Baileyan to give architectural testimony, but just use the plans to confirm to the board what the floor plan's gonna look like and what the basic elevations are gonna look like. So your first page, front elevation, we talked about that with the windows, the only issue that needs to be resolved?
Yes.
And you indicated you're gonna keep the existing window on that?
Yes.
Next page is facing Springfield Avenue, so it's your northern elevation. Indicated now that there are two windows on that side of the building, correct?
Currently, yes.
And they're gonna be blocked out?
Yes.
And now we're looking at the southern facade?
Yes.
Window and door into the office area going to remain?
Yes.
Okay. You've already indicated the two smaller overheads are going to be blocked out, man door, larger overhead. And then in your addition, we have one man door and one overhead, is that accurate?
On this side, yes.
The interior of the addition, despite being physically capable of two stories, is it one open area, or are you gonna have any second floor?
One open area.
Does that accommodate stacking of shelving and things?
Yes.
And now the eastern edge.
Just one pedestrian door.
Okay, so no overheads at all on that, even on the new part?
No.
So unlike what's there now, there'll be no garage door on that side?
Exactly.
Now, let's just look at the last page, and you can describe to the board the floor plan proposed.
Well, you see, if you start from the left, right, you have that reception area, office that we talked about. The first warehouse space are the pictures that you saw with the shelving and the tools that we're currently working out of. And then going to the right is the proposed addition, just additional warehouse, storage, working area that we can operate out of.
There's a small, says existing storage area behind the office, what is that?
Right, I'm sorry about that. So when you go into the existing warehouse that's there now, if you walk in, you'll see a full bathroom. And then there's also like another storage room that we just keep some materials in and supplies. And then a flight of stairs upstairs, that, flight of stairs that take you upstairs, that was also used as like, as an office space as well.
And where is that upstairs area? In other words, what does it cover?
Oh, it's over the reception area now.
Is it also over the smaller portion labeled existing storage, or just?
Yes, yeah, so that line runs straight, basically, from that upstairs.
What are you gonna intend to use the upstairs for now?
I don't use it at all, I'll be honest. I'm hardly ever up there. I would just leave it as is.
What is as is?
Oh, it's, it's just an office space.
Oh, it's, it's no storage, it's just office?
Upstairs is just office. So when I bought it from Rich, he used his downstairs as mainly a reception area, and his upstairs was his private office, which is how it's designed. I have no need for that, so I just use downstairs for everything. Because we don't have people in and out like that, you know? Just makes it easier.
You said, and I don't know if you meant to say it this way, you said that that's a full bath. Is it, or is it a half bath?
That's a full bath. Yeah.
Have a shower, or?
There's a shower still on there, it's real. Never used it.
So the, on the addition, is that, is that a full roll-in, or is there a leveller for the box truck that you kind of roll? Is it a full roll-up door that you can drive the box truck in, or is there a dock height leveller that
Oh, no, it would be like...
To put your tools off of?
I would like to have it just where we can drive right in, so it's ground level?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's no ramp coming off the back to take everything off?
Loading dock, like nothing like that, street level, ground level.
And the same's true for the overhead that you're gonna leave in place on the old building?
That's how it currently is right now, yes.
So there is no loading dock, per se,
No.
for this building at all?
No.
Besides yourself, who else is typically on site during a given day?
I have one other employee. Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 6:00.
Is that likely to change? Do you anticipate hiring new additions?
I would like to. It means business is on the upswing, but right now, I don't see a demand.
Is Allison there at all for any points?
Only to come visit.
Okay. So just from a vehicular point of view, we have your vehicle, which I said, you said is a daily driver work van type of thing?
Work van, yes.
Okay. And the box truck that we saw?
Right.
And then I assume your employee has a vehicle?
Has one, yeah.
So on a typical day, you've got three parking spaces filled?
Yes.
And we're proposing 10?
Right.
So we're way sufficient for what you need?
I think so.
And is it fair to say, even if you did hire one or more employees, that would still be the case?
Yeah, I don't see that being an issue.
What are your hours for operation?
8:30 to 6:30, Monday through Friday.
Confirm there's not intended to be any outdoor storage. Everything that we're seeing now will be replaced by the indoor areas and everything moved inside?
Correct.
Trash and recycling, what do you need?
Right now, we have, it's probably like a two or three-yard small dumpster that gets picked up once a week by grant sanitation.
And is there a separate recycling dumpster of any kind, or?
No, we don't have anything like that.
Really have recycling?
No.
Do you have any containers of scrap metal and things like that on the property?
Not really. It's not something we get into.
Well, I thought maybe if a tool was being scrapped or something was being...
Typically, what we'll do now in that case, we'll just run it right to the scrapyard. I don't really have...
Okay, so you don't have a store in the outside?
No, nothing like that.
I have nothing further for Mr. Bailey at this time.
All right, now does anybody have questions for Mr. Bailey? Quiet group tonight. I have some questions. You had said, I know we're gonna talk to Mr. Hallows, but your intent is to make that back gravel area smaller in size, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And by doing that, you're still gonna accommodate any kind of movement of trucks, correct?
I believe so, yes.
And you're only gonna have a garbage container back there? You're not gonna have any sheds or nothing else, nothing else stored back there? And all that other stuff we saw outside is gonna be moved into the interior of the building?
Correct.
And the interior of the building, obviously, is gonna look a little cleaner and neater with the addition. You hope so. And the upstairs area that you call a office space, is it ever potentially gonna be used for storage, or it's just gonna stay the way?
It's just gonna stay that.
Because essentially, that's just unused area, right?
I agree. It's, it's a tight, narrow staircase to get up there.
Okay, so you wouldn't wanna be carrying stuff?
Right, the stuff we deal with is pretty heavy, so it's just not realistic for our needs.
Okay. Big screen TV, man cave, you know?
Now we're talking.
At a bar?
All right, I just wanted to clarify that.
Absolutely.
Any other, any questions?
John, can you public?
Yeah, all right, yeah, and no, no poll. I don't see any, not seeing any public, I will not open it up to the public. Do our experts have any questions of Mr. Bailey's testimony? Yes, go ahead.
All right. I had asked a question in my letter about where the trash was...
I don't think your mic's working.
It's, it has a red light.
Oh, it does, but, okay. Oh, there it is working.
Okay, so I had asked about the trash, where it was saved. If you could, maybe Mr. Zelli can look at some point, but there's Section 154.3 of the ordinance, it says trash and recycling storage. And it has some standards for trash storage for non-residential use, including you have to have recycling. It has to be enclosed, it has to be on a concrete pad. So, you know, maybe if you wanted to take a minute to just look at, at some point, to see if that is something that you could comply with.
I always advise my clients to agree to do what they're required by law to do, and that's what we're gonna do in this case. So we will certainly amend our plans to follow that ordinance.
Okay, that's great, thank you.
Actually, I have one question I should have asked you. In terms of the outward appearance?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask that.
Once the addition is made, is your intention to paint the whole building same color, or put siding on, or what is your thoughts?
I've talked to my builder, and we're still kind of trying to decide. Painted block is okay, we can do that. We're open, so I haven't really, I'm not married to anything right now.
Uniform color, though, between, uniform treatment between the old and the new?
Absolutely, yeah.
So whatever you do, it's gonna be uniform throughout the entire building?
It would be like, I'd say, a fresh coat of paint all the way around so that everything matches, it looks good. That's the intent. It would be like, let's say a fresh coat of paint all the way around so that everything matches, it looks good, that's the intent.
Are you going to paint it purple?
I take it, Mr. Zell, your client's stipulating to, uh?
It's not a Taco Bell.
Funny. You could stipulate to earth tones or something like that?
No, just, just ensuring, uniformity, okay.
Uniformity between the old and new?
Yeah.
And earth tones regardless of what type of siding you end up using.
Okay.
I just have an addition question, I'm sorry. So the addition is about 10 feet taller in height. Can you explain why the, the existing height, you know, you're not maintaining that existing height in the addition?
Yeah, why do you need the height?
Uh, it would just give us additional storage. Our pallet rack now, I can go instead of buying the 14 or 16 foot rack, whichever I have, now I can buy a 24 foot rack or a 20 foot and just more shelves, more storage. The, the more that's off the ground for us, the easier my life is. We can go right with the forklift, grab it and put it down and it just makes things a whole lot easier.
And the one bigger garage door will accommodate bigger vehicles to back in? Or higher vehicles?
Yeah, we don't really back in, I mean, we can just kind of go, we just load right out in the driveway and that's it. But if we, if they need to back in, I mean, sometimes we need to and when it's raining and stuff like that, you know, stuff like that.
Fork, forklift will be kept inside?
Always, yeah.
Thank you.
Any engineering questions?
No, I'm good, I'll reserve it for the end.
All right. Any other questions? Okay. Next question.
So, uh, we're playing musical chairs, I'm going to give Bill the microphone and.
Going to move up there?
Sit back.
I'm going to hear.
Now you can stay relaxed.
But he needs the, that portable mic.
You just don't get to talk now.
Yeah, I, I noticed on our last application, nobody get to the attorney on that mic, it was like he wasn't talking.
I guess we all thought it was working.
Yeah, we thought it was, but it wasn't.
Mr. Hallows, rumor has it, you've appeared before this board a few million times.
A few times.
I only have one question, is your license in good standing?
It is.
You haven't been reprimanded?
No, I have not.
Not by us either, right? You're, you're an expert.
That's very good.
Yeah, I know.
Bill, would you please, uh?
I'm allowed.
Take us through the site as it exists, tell us what we're planning to do and to the extent that you're going to use any colorized exhibits, please let us know what sheets they are.
Okay. This is the area map sheet, one of the drawings that you have, and it, it shows where the property is. It's approximately 200 feet south of the intersection of Mountain Avenue and Valley Road, right behind Ancona Restaurant, across from Castle Place. And I'm sure you're all familiar, you got the State Farm, you got Ancona Restaurant, you got, uh, Jim Coppoli Salon there, you've got the gas station, service station on the northwest corner, and, um, physical therapy and some sort of a restaurant at the other.
Mexican food.
Mexican food at the northeast corner. And just, do, well, I'll go over to existing conditions and just so everyone's familiar.
So that's colorized sheet what, Bill?
This would be sheet two.
Exhibit A?
What's, uh, what's the date on that?
January 24th, 2023.
Thank you very much.
So we'll do that A1, council?
Sounds good.
I'm sorry, Bill, what sheet was it again?
Two, sheet two. This is a colorized drawing of the existing conditions. And just so, when I start talking about east or west, the top of the drawing is north, the bottom of the drawing is south, the title block is east, and the border, or the Castle Place side would be west. Um, what, what you see here is the existing conditions as they are today. And this is basically the way it was when it was Rich's automotive. You had some parking spaces in the front, you had a sign in the front of the building, the tan area is the existing building that's out there. You've got a concrete pad behind the, uh, the building. There was a large container that has been removed from the site. And you've got the two sheds. And as was noted before, it's paved from Mountain Avenue all the way to basically the rear of the building and then the, behind the building, you've got the concrete pad and then the rest is gravel. And I'm going to go over to, this is sheet four, it's actually the landscape plan.
A2?
Sounds good. Date on that one, please? Same date, I would assume?
January 24th, 2023.
Great, thank you.
I don't know whether you can quite see it, but we've got the tan existing building, a little darker brown area is the, uh, proposed addition. And we're going to re-stripe the parking in the front, provide for handicap access or a handicap parking stall. And the access across this driveway is relatively flat. I can put some, I know it's one of the engineer's questions, and we can add some spot shots there to show that we're somewhere relatively flat going across that, uh, that driveway into the building. Got the little gravel area. And we're, this, to the south, southerly property line, you've got a, we've got a shaded in the green area, that's going to be new lawn. And what we have shown here is actually a 30-foot truck that can make the turn to go to the back of the building, back up to where the sheds are and come out. And the, uh, the truck that they have now could actually park behind the building in the area that, of the new pavement behind the building. And then behind that area, we're, we're going to remove more gravel area. And we're going to remove gravel area to the north of the addition. And that brings us down to get that 47.3% lot coverage.
And what is that landscaping to the north of the building? How many trees or what?
We have three evergreen trees here on the Ancona site, you've got a, um, some deciduous trees that go across, so we kind of split between some of the trees that they have and put in the evergreens. And across the front, we have some hollies and a, and a dogwood tree. And in, in front of that, and the rest of it's just lawn. And in front of that is the, um, the sign, the existing sign that's out there. I know there's.
What do we have to the east of the property in terms of, uh?
We have a wooded brush area, that's the site of some apartments in the future. And I think those apartments are going to be way back where the, where the ground gets a little bit higher. And then to the south, there's a residential building, but it sits quite a distance from the property line.
Do we have any environmentally sensitive areas, either on the site or directly adjacent to it?
We do, adjacent to it, it would be environmentally sensitive.
Uh, but we don't need any kind of relief as a result of that?
Not that I am aware of.
No buffers?
If anything, we're, we're existing and we're taking away in this case. It's not like we're expanding anything. And we'll turn that into lawn. And there was, there has been the question of the dumpster. I originally thought that the building was big enough that they could just keep it inside and bring it out on the days when they needed it. But since the dumpster's there, we would, uh, look to probably put a enclosure somewhere so the truck can come right in. Because as Mr. Bailey had indicated to me, actually they just picked up the dumpster and, and put it into the truck and then lay it back down.
I noticed from the photographs, there's fencing along, uh, the south side and a little bit about along the, the west side. What's going to be there now, the, that, the proposed?
We weren't looking to change that. This, this is fairly wooded on this property, adjacent property to the south.
What about the west side as far as fencing?
This.
The east side, I'm sorry, the east?
The east side?
They noticed a little bit of fencing there now.
There wasn't, we hadn't proposed any change to that, you know, that, the fencing kind of outlines where the gravel area is. I think we would just take that out, it's not something that really is necessary.
Okay, so you're going to remove any fencing on the west side?
East side.
East side, I keep confusing, I'm sorry, east side. Are you going to repair or?
Uh, Mr. Bailey has just said he's just going to leave it there.
We can just leave it as it is?
Okay.
Is it a security reason? It's better to have it than it's not, but it's actually, it doesn't, it's not enclosed.
Bill, how does the property drain?
Well, the front part, there's a drain in the, uh, in the parking lot. It just installs and that goes out to Mountain Avenue. And to the back, it goes towards that low area and the adjacent property, which is a natural feature.
So in your professional opinion, we do not need to do any actual site, uh, stormwater construction?
No, I think the fact that we're reducing by quite a bit.
Is there any way of?
Certainly no increase.
Of, of actually making the fence incorporate or enclose the entire area back there? As opposed to having it fenced, no fence, fence? Uh, because I'm looking here and it seems like there's, there's some fencing, then there's an open space and then there's some more fencing and it's kind of sporadic.
Yeah, it is.
Would it make more sense as far as shielding what's back there from the site of that, that residential house? I know it's far away, but they can't see that area. Would it make more sense to fence off, uh, the entire back section there in the west?
This, to the east section?
I keep saying west, I'm sorry, east.
Yeah, we can explore that, sure.
Because, uh, I mean, the, how, what's the condition of the fence?
It's good.
It's good, okay. There's no rotted areas falling down, okay. You'd fix any of that, right? If there was?
Any addition.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, what are you thinking to shield, just reminder that there's not going to be anything except for parking and the dumpster?
No, I understand that, but you do have, from the, one of these pictures, you do have a house that I looked at and it looks like they can pretty much see, um, uh, I gotta see what picture it is here that I saw it in.
So you think you're buffering the view of the operations themselves?
Somewhat, yeah, there's a house that shows your parking lot and there's a house over here. And it looks like if you look at their windows, they can be looking into your back property over here.
That's south, right? That's the south side.
That's, right, but it's looking into the, uh, it's looking that way.
It'd be the, the house that sits on the southerly property?
Yeah, and it seems that if you have anybody making, building or changing the, the east side over there, uh, especially, and also for your own security, it would be nice if the fence encompassed from the edge of your new construction all the way around to your entrance driveway area so that you can enclose that entire place off, basically. It would be, you know, it would be away from the site of Valley Road, it would be away from the site of any other neighbors and it would be more secure for you.
Okay.
So I'm just not sure, you're asking the parking lot area?
He's talking about.
No, the back area.
The back area, doesn't it have a fence there?
No, it's, it's not totally all around. It's got a fence, it's, it's open.
But you're not talking about bringing the fence?
That's the east side though.
To, um?
That's east. That's south, that's what I'm saying, the south.
No, no, no. Just around where that gate is to go into the back?
Yeah.
There's already a fence along there. Bring it around to the, to the east side, up along the, well, I don't even know if you can put it in the words or somewhere in that area, and then to the left to match, to go to across to the building?
See that?
The back of the building.
All fence.
So it's all enclosed back there and it's totally out of the view of, of.
So, uh, just to be clear, the south side is completely fenced. You want the fence on the east side?
Right, on the east.
By where the marshland is?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
Because it's open there and it, and it looks kind of sporadic, a little fence, no fence, fence.
Well, I think we would, rather than have this arc, we would just put a nice straight line.
Yeah, whatever, yeah. I mean, whatever looks more aesthetic.
That's open space and that's going to be redone, green.
Right.
So do you want that? Do you want to fence that off or do you want to look at that?
Yeah, you want to see the vegetation or the fence?
Well, how about some?
I think he's concerned about the fence.
I'm worrying about the people looking in, not the people looking out. We don't know what's going to be there in the future and plus, the house that sits to the south of it does sit back.
So you want him to screen for something that might be built there someday?
And also for security reasons and for aesthetics, just because truck's going to be sitting there, you can also see it from Valley Road. If you're looking into, you know, at certain times of the year, you can be seeing that area. It just makes more sense to have it all enclosed with a fence.
Why not trees instead of a fence?
What?
Why not trees instead of a fence?
No, I was just thinking tree is fence because it keeps people from walking through there, i- it's more secure. I, I, you know, well.
Okay with it.
So, so just to be clear, the app? I'm assuming the applicant's stipulated to just continuing that fence from the south side to the east side, making it all one contiguous? Okay, great.
Since we're talking about keeping the fence, is there a certain direction the fence should be facing?
Always the good side out.
Right.
Or is the good side currently facing in?
On the south side it is.
Yeah, the good side's facing, yeah, you're right, the good side's facing in.
Unless it's two-sided.
Is it two-sided there?
No, it's, it's a stockade fence, but just, I mean realistically, this, the driveway comes in at an angle and this house is way back, back on. I don't think they're worried too much about what, they have the good side or the bad side of the fence.
Well, what's existing, yeah, true. Yeah, I know, it's on the right, it's, it's bad side in, on the other side, it's good side in.
I don't think the ordinance is in place for, you know, how far back the house is. I think it's, you know, the property that you're approving has to follow what the ordinance says.
And that house has a, has a, I, I almost unencumbered view except for some trees of that fence, basically, from what I can see.
Not when, not when the trees grow in.
No, yeah, maybe. But, uh, if, what can we do to make that more aesthetic? Is there li, is there lighting in your parking lot? I noticed there's a lamp post.
I was, I was going to get there, but.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead.
We've gotten hung up on the fence.
The fence, but, um, is that a double-sided fence, do you know, or is it just a, the, the, the stockade fence?
My recollection, it's a stockade fence.
But it's one-sided, so, okay.
And I think it's going both ways.
Right, yeah.
Oh, you mean like a double?
No, there's parts of it that are facing.
Oh.
Yeah. They kind of like went along the, uh, the.
The road.
The road side.
Side facing mountain is.
Is the good side out. And then they proceeded to reverse it on the south side, which is really silly, but, um.
Good for their place.
Yeah, it was good for them, yeah. But.
Would a reasonable compromise, especially since the neighbor is not here objecting in any way, for, we'd agree to new fencing all the way around as you suggested, but not have to replace the existing or, or reverse it or anything? So the new would, the new would face the way it's supposed to, but the existing would just stay as it is?
I don't, I, I'm fine with that. You know, I know the other board members weren't even thinking of fence, but I'm just, I, I just want to avoid any further, any future problems and I think a fence would, would do that.
So is that a variance then?
I was just going to ask Liz, would we need a judicial variance?
Yeah.
Not a design waiver?
I mean, that fence is already existing the long way.
Right, to allow the existing.
But it's under review, right, so to allow the fence to be in the wrong direction, we need a special.
To the extent it already exists.
So if it, if we didn't, it'd have to rip it out, basically. Yeah.
Is that an exception, Liz?
I, I would ask for a variance.
Okay.
We'll call it a variance.
Yeah.
And again, the new fence will agree to put it in the right direction.
It may be, actually, I, I apologize, it, it is a, um.
It's a waiver?
Yes, thank you.
All right, that's fine, I'm, uh, at least we adjust that because it's there and we didn't realize it, yeah. Okay, fine, that's good. Oh, let's get to that lamp post.
Okay. This is where I apologize to the board because there was some mix-up in my office. My landscape plan, I have two landscape plans, one has lighting on it, one has, doesn't have lighting on it and the board got the, the drawing without the lighting on it. But I can go over that with you, this is basically an exhibit.
This is, this is exhibit A3?
A3.
This is a corrected lighting plan? Decorrect lighting plan?
Yeah, hopefully the correct lighting plan, it would be eventually, if the board were to approve this, be added to the landscape plan. What we're showing here and.
Mr. Hallows, I'm sorry, dated this exhibit?
Well, it's dated January 24th, 2023.
Got it, thank you.
So, uh, what are we doing with the lighting?
We're going to take away the lighting that's there now.
Okay.
And we're proposing to put, it'll be two lights on posts that would be. And we're proposing to put, it'll be two lights on posts that would be-
Sheet four?
Yeah, it's, it's really sheet four, but somehow my count operator put it sheet four of six and there's only five drawings, so.
Okay.
So sheet four was the colorize we saw a moment ago, is that still right?
Yes.
Okay.
What I'm proposing is there, there are LED lights on poles and those poles would, in this case, would be the two parking areas. Where you have the five stalls and the five stalls closer to the property line. They do have house side cut-ups and there's very little light spillage onto the adjoining property. And there are four lights that would be mounted on the building and they would light up the other part of the, uh, the parking area in the rear of the building, so. And again, that's a, um, uh, LED type light. These are the, well, we used to call them the old shoebox, but now they're the streamlined LED lights, something that you see over at ShopRite.
And that lighting is, uh, it's, it, it's contained, it's not, uh, it doesn't bleed over?
There's very, there's very little, maybe a little spillage on the one light, um-
What direction? That would be to the south?
To the south, very, very little there.
And how high are these?
Well, they'd be mounted on the building, they'd be about twelve feet high.
Mounted on the, so there's no post, no pole?
These two be posts.
Oh, those are posts. Well, how high are the posts?
They're shown to be fifteen feet high, these two.
Do we need them fifty feet high?
Well, the reason they're fifteen feet high is because you have a three-foot concrete pedestal that they would sit on. Um, I can talk to lighting people and we can go down to try to get them at twelve with a-
The shorter they are, the less spillage.
With a nine-foot pole rather than-
Right, so the shorter they be, the less spillage they feed, right?
Well, yeah, but it'd be a little bit, maybe a little bit more intense right under the-
Okay.
Right under the light.
I'm more worried about spillage off of the property.
I-
Are those gonna be directional LEDs though, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. So the spillage would come off the building mounted, if anything?
Well, I think, well, even with the LEDs, I mean, there's a little detail down here, but they're, I think you're all familiar with the ones over at ShopRite.
The only reason I'm saying that is because if you look through town, there's a lot of lighting that tends to be, uh, un-directional or uni- it tends to be just going anywhere some, sometimes and it, it glares. Uh, it, it's kind of one of these things where unless you're, you're driving at night and you don't see it, but when you are, you notice it. So I just want to make sure we're not creating another set of lights that are going to be a glare off the property.
I don't think that's gonna be the case here at all. I mean, we've got the, we're gonna propose the three hundred or three thousand K lights, a soft white light.
And what's the hours of that light, of those lightings?
Um, I think probably we would, um, probably turn them off when you leave and then-
Would they be on timers?
Look to put a security light that would be much smaller.
Okay.
Or, or maybe we can just see how it works out, put one of these, maybe one on the back or the new addition and then one on the front over the door.
As, as a security-
As a security light and then just leave those on.
So it looks like there's two lights in the back there as, as it is now, right?
Gone.
They're gone and, and how tall are they, do you know? Are they about the same height?
They're about twelve.
Okay.
And they're the old type lights and they're so expensive to run compared to the LEDs.
Do they cast off more light into the neighboring property?
I-
The, the old, the old lights that are there now, would they cast off more light or what you're proposing?
I was told, and I believe it to be true, that when it was Rich's automotive, he never used those lights because they were too expensive and then they, they really didn't work very well. And he had put his own LEDs on the building itself.
Mr. Hollis, before we get off lighting, a few potential conditions, I think I'm hearing from your testimony here. Um, applicant, providing you guys will want to stipulate to these, we're gonna try to make those post lights twelve feet tall, uh, no spillage for the mounted lights on the building. And then regarding the security light, um, and what I had in mind would be to, you know, propose a security light, leave it up to Liz to figure out whether or not it's appropriate or not. Make sure it's in compliance, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I would even go as far as to say the lighting plan as a whole, review and approve.
Okay.
Right.
Okay. It's gonna be compliant.
It would be the engineer.
Okay, okay, my apologies.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was in, I was intending to say that because you haven't seen it, it's really just an exhibit.
That's acceptable.
Based, based on the presentation, uh, you feel confident that the site lighting will be able to be designed without additional variance or design exceptions?
I, I do.
Okay.
While we're talking about lighting, can I ask a question? Um, the sign in front, the tool doctor sign, does that have lighting?
Uh, currently there's electric out there. I would like to put two lights, like the mulch beds.
Okay. Because, uh, I was asking about that because I was hoping you would put down lighting and have the lights facing down rather than up, which creates pollution, like pollution.
So goosenecks from the top of the sign itself, is that what you're thinking?
Is that a possibility?
Um, I've never seen, I have to see one.
You'll see, it's very common.
Yeah.
And that's the trend forward is the down lighting, right?
I can look here, just to kind of, you know. And then, like if I don't like it, you just put no lights and something?
Yeah. I'll, I'll take, I'll, I'll take it that you'd be willing to stipulate to, if you ever decide to put any lighting on the front sign, it will be down lighting, the goosenecks as Mr. Zelli described.
Okay.
And if not, then no lighting, just-
Yeah, well, incorporate it into the lighting plan in general. If you want to do it, at least you can and you don't have to come back before us to do it. It would be-
And what about lighting of the sign?
We just mentioned-
That was the sign you were talking about?
Yeah, gooseneck down lighting.
Thank you.
Mr. Hollis, just for the record, are we proposing any tree removal on the site?
No, but I did notice that over by the sheds that are gonna be removed, we may have to do a little trimming. I don't think we have to take any trees down. I think we have to trim those trees back for the paved area that we want to make for the truck backup.
Are we proposing, because in my mind anyway, there might have been some discrepancy between your plan and what Mr. Bailey had testified to, are we going to have complete asphalt by the end of this project or there's still a gravel area?
It was, it was going to be paved. Um, again, the pavement stops where the new addition is and then we would have this area paved.
And what, just explain and, and that you are reducing the impervious by taking away some of the gravel, correct?
Correct.
And the pavement is a benefit because it doesn't get muddy and it's less upkeep?
Yes. It's easier to upkeep too and you have snow removal.
So it won't turn into slush and mud and have to-
Well, you're not pushing the stones and then, then it does become mud.
Okay. So at the end of the project, we have no gravel left at all?
Correct.
That's correct, okay.
Other than where the little picnic table is and that eventually-
Right, okay. But that's decorative.
Correct. That's decorative stone.
Okay. Does our experts have any questions besides what we just-
Let's stay on that for a quick second. So the existing gravel area is, has been there for a number of years, well-compacted, essentially acts as a true impervious surface.
Yes, yeah, cause it, it just, again, that's just a automotive and there were cars in and had it all the time and then there were cars parked.
Right, so it's always continually loaded and tracked by vehicles, compacted down, so it's essentially the base course to, to a pavement area currently?
Yes.
Okay. So from a stormwater runoff perspective, you know, I, I treated it when I reviewed the application as essentially just full impervious area, gravel or pa- or, or pavement. Um, and the reduction that they're providing will provide that reduction in overall runoff?
So just to go over that-
And they're also offsetting that, with that reduction, they're offsetting their buffer to any of the environmentally sensitive areas.
So just to go over, what is, just so you agree with their numbers as far as what existed, what they're reducing it down to?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, I had the same numbers for impervious coverage, so we have your existing non-conforming fifty-five point four and then you have a proposed of forty-seven point three with a max of forty for the variance.
Okay, so it's a little over the max, but less than what's there?
Right, and then, you know, we look at that for impervious coverage for the variance as all impervious. And we look at it stormwater, newly graded gravel areas that are for landscaping purposes would have an opportunity to infiltrate. These are not those, these are historic footprints of motor vehicle surface, so they've been loaded, they've been contaminated with any oils and things and sheens. Um, removing those areas and creating a larger setback to the environmental, environmentally sensitive areas to the east is a benefit to the project. Um, and I do agree that it doesn't appear that there are DEP permits that would be required based on the proposed footprint of the asphalt is within the limits of all the existing asphalt or existing gravel. So they're not expanding any of those limits, so by reducing them in full, there's no reason to, to trigger permits with DEP.
Right, okay, good.
So even the area underneath the shed, the area under the sheds, that's gravel right now too?
Yeah, and, and treat it as impervious with the impact of the shed roof.
Okay.
Correct.
I just have one request. If, if, um, the board is to look favorably on this application, when the site plan drawings are redone to just, it's, it was confusing to me because it says proposed parking, paved parking, and then there's a gravel area, which I think is gonna be paved now, so I-
We have to correct the terminology.
Yeah, because I was confused too. I thought that you were maintaining some gravel, okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's just a little layer control, some of your existing conditions are still popping through.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so just make sure the window air issue and the gravel thing are fixed.
Um, sewer, is there an existing sewer connection to the property?
Yes.
Okay.
And water?
You would be maintaining that, that sewer and public water?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and-
And the same electric, everything else?
Yeah, everything would be the same. I don't know whether you have to increase the service but, for the electric, but I don't think we'd have to increase the water or the sewer because, you know.
Yeah, so hearing testimony regarding the operations, the employees, um, there's other agency approvals in my letter with American Water, um, for both water and sewer. Obviously you need to coordinate your accounts with them, but I don't believe there's any impact of replacing a water service to upgrade or, um, I don't believe there'll be an increase in use on the sewer demand either for sewer allocation. So in terms of any concerns with moratoriums or anything like that, I don't think there's any issue there with their change in use.
Probably less.
So we can remove four-four and four-five from my letter. Um, while we're on it, four-three also, I should not have included because you're not over an acre, so you won't qualify for a five-G three-
Correct.
-stormwater permit. But you will still remain with four-one and four-two as outside agencies, planning board and soil conservation.
Correct.
Okay.
Any questions of this witness by the board members?
I have a question for our planner. Oh, good. When we get to the point. So on the retail trade uses and the personal household consumption, I noticed that automobile parts are on the approved list and so is the idea that there's at least a possibility that the automobile parts are used for personal consumption, but not necessarily?
No, it, um, so where they, it's run afoul is in, in terms of, I guess, let me just get it up, hold on, sorry. Um, but it, the way the definition is, is written in the ordinance, it says that it has to be for like personal consumption. And, and this isn't for personal consumption, right? It's he's selling to, I guess, other-
Businesses.
Professionals or businesses. It's, you know, he's, he's at a, he's not selling directly to a homeowner.
But in terms of if it was in, if he was selling automobile parts, presumably a business owner could go in and, you know? No. No?
No. No, I, I, it was, sorry, keep going with your question.
Could buy whatever automobile parts they needed for the business. So is it the primary purpose is personal and household consumption?
Yeah, like, like if it's, for example, like a Napa Auto Parts, I mean, that's really for a, a layperson to go in, right, I think. Um, it's, I never go, but other people do. Um, but I think in that situation, it would, it would, um, you know, that would fit. But if it's, in this instance, it's really he's selling to other professionals.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
Business to business as far as-
Yes, exactly, business to business, thank you, yeah.
So it's not that business to business is prohibited, it's that the primary purpose or primary, um-
Goals of the business.
Right.
Well, the-
Sale has to be for personal or household consumption?
Exactly, and, um, the way the ordinance is written, anything that's not explicitly permitted is prohibited.
Okay.
So if it, yeah.
But in this case, as I see it, with the elimination of people driving in and out, they have a car fixture, actually reducing the amount of volume and traffic on the property.
Yes, I think that'll be part of their D-one use variance testimony.
But it's the use that we're concerned with.
That's right.
It's a prohibited use.
It's a prohibited use.
So we have to figure out why.
But it's a highly technical.
Yes.
It is, it is highly technical.
But I, I recall what you said, like every use that's not explicitly permitted is prohibited.
Correct, correct. And, and where they, it's, it is a technicality, I would agree with you that there, he's not, if, if you were selling to just residents of Long Hill who walked in and bought the piping, he would be a permitted use.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Could be the same exact business, but selling to a different party, yeah.
Right, right.
Any other questions of either our expert or their expert?
So once, if, if that variance for that additional use is approved, then-
Speak into the mic.
Some other business in the future, that variance then carries across that property and that would be-
No.
No.
It's only personal to him.
Use variances are very specific to the application.
Oh, it doesn't carry with the land type of, okay. Well, cause it's by the zone.
Same business incumbent.
No, it's per the applicant. For a use area, it's per the applicant area.
Right, okay.
But the impervious cur- coverage would-
Would, yeah, yes.
And the fence would-
The bulk, yeah. But that's being improved.
But the, but the property changes would carry over.
Okay.
Any other questions of our, either our experts or theirs?
No, okay.
Any other questions of yours?
I have no further questions. I have no further witnesses. I will, by way of argument, not testimony, address the positive and negative criteria. Whenever the board's ready.
You want to come back down here, you can.
Yeah.
Uh, although that mic doesn't work for me, I'll still move the other one.
You know, this mic seems to be working well, so if you don't mind me staying here, maybe I'll just stay here. So again, we just have two variances. Uh, the first one is the D-one that we've talked about. Uh, again, it really is a very technical reason that we even need it, um, but it is a D-one. We do have to qualify under Medici. So we have to show that, in this case, that the site is particularly suited for the use so as to prevent the, to promote the general welfare. Uh, I think in many cases, the best way to look at whether a site is particularly well-suited is to see what the history of the site has been. Uh, and the history of this site, with the benefit of a use variance, was to have a much more intensive auto repair facility. Uh, so if it was particularly suited and albeit that variance was granted before Medici, so I'm not gonna try to argue that, uh, that they qualified back then for Medici. Uh, but the fact of the matter is that intensive use, uh, has done very well on this site for the last forty years. Uh, so to me anyway, that would be a pretty good indication, uh, that this site is particularly suited for this kind of a use. And what we're looking at now, uh, again, is a much, much less intensive, uh, use. Same kind of work in a way, uh, that you're dealing with equipment and repairs, uh, but just much different types of equipment. And again, uh, the lack of this in and out customer base that was there for the last forty years certainly sheds light on this. Uh, and when you get to your negative criterion, uh, we've improved the situation clearly, uh, proposing to improve it, uh, so certainly not a negative, any kind of detriment. Uh, also, uh, even though we didn't have Medici back in nineteen eighty, you did have site plan approval. Uh, so the board, uh, at that time made a finding that the more intensive use, uh, satisfied the negative criterion. So it'd be kind of hard to imagine that ours wouldn't if that one did. With regard to the bulk variance, uh, again, we're improving the situation. Uh, so I'm not gonna try to argue it's a C-one, but it's certainly a C-two. Uh, the benefit to the, uh, general good, uh, in reducing impervious coverage, the environmental benefit to that outweighs any detriment again, since we don't see any detriment to begin with. So I think we've satisfied both the positive and the negative criterion for both the D-one use and the C-two bulk variance. And we thank you all for your attention this evening and would appreciate a positive vote.
Thank you, thank you. All right, that said, uh, any other comments by our experts?
Sure, I just wanna, um, just ask you a question with regard to the D-one use variance and the Medici, the enhanced, um, you know, proof related to the negative criteria, right? With, which is regarding the impact on the zone and the zoning plan. Is it fair to say that a zoning ordinance or the master plan can't possibly contemplate all these, Is it fair to say that a zoning ordinance or the master plan can't possibly contemplate all these, all types of uses? And that this use is, is so specialized that it's not unusual, that it wouldn't have been captured in the zone or zoning plan?
I, I think that's definitely fair to say. There's no way you can plan for every single thing. And I think it's fair to say probably not one person in this room, myself included, had ever heard of this particular field. I know I hadn't before Mr. Bailey contacted me, very, very specialized, right?
Okay, thank you, that's it.
All righty. Gary, would you like to start the, would you like to hear, first of all, let our attorney?
Do you want me to sum up?
Yeah, sum it up.
Absolutely. Okay, so we are talking about, as Mr. Zelli pointed out, a D1 use variance. I'm not going to provide the proofs that he already has. That's for a tool repair, refurbishment and sales use, the sales component being the issue that we need variance relief for in this case. So that's our D1 use variance. We need one bulk for impervious coverage, 40% maximum permitted. There are 55.4% right now and they're proposing 47.3%, so that is a reduction that I can't calculate in my head because I'm a lawyer, not an engineer. And one design waiver for the fence, the existing fence portions that are facing the wrong way. Wow, that's really, that's really loud when you turn your head just a slight degree. Okay, so those are items of relief and let me just run through the conditions here. Okay, start with the architectural drawings. We need to revise those to reflect that the front window, or, yeah, the front facade window is going to be remaining. Going to be complying with section 154.3, which is the trash storage ordinance. Am I getting that right?
Yes.
Trash storage, okay, great, thank you. Another condition is that the outward appearance of the addition is going to match the existing and, let me rephrase that. The entire project, once completed, will have a uniform outward appearance. That's the next one. I had something related to adding a topographic note to the plans concerning grading.
That the gravel will be blackened.
Yeah, they, in the proposed condition, that it, what is shown currently as being gravel is take, is removed because it's going to be paved.
Right. Not that one though, Liz, this was another one concerning, I think the grading where the, Mr. Hall, is it?
Spot grades.
Spot grades, right.
Yes.
Demonstrate the ADA compliance, which is, you could just refer that to my letter already.
Oh, that's in the letter, okay.
Yep.
Joey, you did such a good job, I don't even have to be here, hold on. Okay. Next one, I heard Mr. Hallows and I didn't, I don't think we actually addressed this, but he suggested that you guys would be adding a dumpster enclosure. You guys willing to stipulate to adding that?
Is that part of 154.3?
It is.
Oh, it's in there.
It's part of the compliance.
Oh, fantastic, all right. All right, so that's that one. And then I had a few related to lighting. All the post lighting will be 12 feet in height. There will be no spillage from the mounted building lights. You'll be submitting a revised lighting plan. It will be up to Mr. Voich's review and approval. And an additional condition, if any lighting is ever put on the front monument sign, it will be downward gooseneck lighting or some other form of downward lighting. And in the alternative, if you can't get such lighting fixtures, then there will be no lighting there. And then, as Liz touched on, the correct terminology regarding the gravel. She kind of spelled that better than I possibly could. And in addition to that, otherwise complying with all of the items in Ms. Laheny's June 1, 2023 review memorandum pertaining to the application. And also complying with Mr. Voich's June 5, 2023 review memorandum pertaining to the application, with the exception of items 4.3, 4.4 and 4.5. Okay, and I believe that is it. And if I'm leaving anything out, please jump in.
I, I just have one that I didn't raise, but I, it was in my letter, which had to do with the architectural plans say that the addition's going to be 29.1 feet. And the engineering plan say 33. Okay, so they should just.
Revised the plans to.
Revised the plan.
Yes, to be 29.1.
Okay, great.
Thank you for catching that.
Yeah. And I think that's it for me.
Great. Deliberation. Gary, would you start?
Sure. I think we're all familiar with Rich's automotive and how you guys have clearly demonstrated there's going to be less impact to the site or there already has been. I think a lot of the suggestions that we've given, you guys have listened to and, and made some modifications and adjustments. And I'm going to be in favor of this application.
Jessica.
Yeah, I agree. I'm also in favor of the application. I think that you meet the D1 requirement in terms of the particularly suited use for the property for all of the reasons described in terms of what it was and what it will be and how the impact will be lessened basically all around. Aesthetically, although Rich's was somewhat of an institution in Long Hill, I think that you're going to be making good improvements, appropriate improvements to the proper, property aesthetically that'll, you know, benefit the, the entire community and I am for the application.
Thank you.
Tony.
Yeah, I just echo everything that both Gary and Jessica have said. I think it meets all the criteria and I'd be in favor of it.
Thank you.
This is a really hard one to figure out.
No, wait, man, not you.
So I, I agree with, with my colleagues. I think in some way this is almost, well, I, let's just say I agree with my colleagues on all their points.
Thank you. Scott.
I feel this is improving the property. You're cleaning it up. An automotive repair shop, there's a lot of stuff going on and you're paving everything. I just think it's a better situation. I'm in favor of it.
Thank you.
Gary.
I think Jessica did a great job of explaining the D1, but I think it is particularly well-suited use for that, for that particular spot. And like our planner told us, everything is prohibited, so we have to make a decision on what we're going to allow. And I think it's perfect for that spot. That compo, also considering that you are reducing the lot coverage by, by a little more than 8%, I think that's impactful in that area right next to Wetlands. I'm definitely in favor of that application.
Thank you.
Now, Tom.
That's what I'm saying. This is a tough one. Let's see, to go from the auto dealer to you? Cleaned up, painted, looking bright and shiny new? This is a slam dunk. Only because, I can only be this flippant because they've all done a great job in, in saying all the right reasons why.
Thank you. I, I feel the same way as my colleagues. I think you've, you've satisfied the negative and positive criteria. Even though it's technically not an allowable use because of who you're selling for, I think that's a very narrow technicality. And perhaps as was brought out by both our planner and, and the attorney, that not every use can be thought about. So I think this is one of the least impactful uses you can have on this property. It'll clean the property up. It'll shield it from view of a lot of other properties around it. It'll be a lot more aesthetic to the neighborhood, so I would be in favor of it. Now, yes, do I hear a motion to, to approve this variance?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Well called.
Mr. Aronio.
Yes.
Ms. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. Gianakis.
Yes.
Mr. Hane.
Yes.
Mr. Flatley.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Grosskopf.
Yes.
Chairman Gurek.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. Have a great night.
Are we off?
No, you haven't made a motion yet.
Do we have, before we adjourn, what's coming up?
Oh, two weeks from now, we start the assisted living law.
Okay, all right. Is that the only one on that night?
Oh, yeah.
You want to get some residential's out of the way that night?
Maybe a resolution, depending if Chris gets ready.
Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that.
Second.
Second.
All adjourn, all in favor? All right.